Okay, I see we have a relatively full house, full of very interested people, I'm sure. My name is Tom Schuler. I'm the chairman of the zoning board of appeals. I'm going to ask each of the people here with me to introduce themselves to other members of the board, starting with you, Catherine.
Sure. Catherine Chester, 5 Church Street.
Mark Mills, 15 Cherry Street.
Patricia Andrew, 11 Cherry Street.
And Miles. Miles?
Miles Moffett, Train Hill Road.
Okay. And Miles, as a member of the board, he'll be participating by Zoom. This is a zoning board appeal, request for appeal. And it's an appeal by David and Stephanie Adler at 7 Lee Road. And this appeal is pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 8, and the Stockbridge zoning bylaws, Section 7.2.1, in response to a notice of violation dated November 20, 2023, issued by the Stockbridge Building Inspector. And just for the record, notice of this hearing was posted in the Berkshire Eagle on January 16, 2024, and on January 9, 2024. In addition, certified notice was given via certified mail to the abutters, which are Edward Segilla, Rocky Hill, New Jersey, the Hanson Raymond Trust, Ralston Nominee Trust, care of Terry Ralston, Stockbridge, Mass., Sandra and Joel Gerillich, trustees of the 2009 Gerillich Family Trust, located in Boston, Mass., and Eugenia Luca, Longboat Key, Florida, Sylvia and Jason Krasner, Scarsdale, New York, Patricia Harper, Stockbridge, Mass., McDonald and O'Brien of the J.K. McDonald, E.M. O'Brien Revocable Trust, Lee, Mass., Lori Rando, Scotch Plains, New Jersey, and Berkshire Gas Company. All these abutters and interested parties have been sent notice of the hearing by certified mail.
Excuse me, I'm also an abutter, and I did receive a notice. I'm Laura Flint of Stockbridge. I'm one of the other Heron Pond people.
Okay. Well, we didn't see it in here, Laura, but we're glad that you shared that with us. Thank you.
Thanks.
At this point, I just want to make sure I sort of understand from a procedural perspective. My understanding is that there was a notice of violation, which was issued by the Stockbridge Building Commissioner, and an appeal from that notice of violation has been taken by Stephanie and David Adler. Is that a fair statement of what happened?
Yes.
And I guess what I'd like to find out, before I let the petitioners, the Adlers, make their presentation, I just wanted to see if the building inspector could just give us a little bit of a procedural background before we ask the Adlers to make their presentation.
So my letter went out basically in response to a request from Attorney Nick Arianti. Basically, the gist of the letter was essentially that the property had kind of overstepped its bounds as far as how much storage was there, and that there was a special permit, and my, the 05 special permit. And my enforcement letter was essentially requesting that be adhered to. That's the general gist of my letter. I like to keep it short.
Okay. Well, we'll probably hear a little bit more for you on that. But thank you for the procedural background. And just so I'm clear, it would appear that there was some sort of proceeding. Was there a proceeding before the Board of Selectmen that precipitated any of this? It looked like there was something that happened in November.
Correct.
Okay. Can you shed any light on that? Can our buildings commissioner shed any light on that? Or is that something that we can take up at some point? I just want to make sure we understand the procedural history behind all this. And I guess my question would be to the building commissioner, was this something that occurred in connection or is it in response to the hearing in November with the select board?
No. So this was something that was on our radar. This was something that was on our radar because the fire chief had actually brought this to my attention initially, based on the storage we spoke of earlier.
Okay. The reason I ask is that there appeared to be some proceeding with the select board sometime in early November, and the letter, what we see is November 30.
There was. And from my part, I actually held off on official enforcement only because my understanding is that the select board allowed that. Really, my enforcement is not necessary anymore because it would have allowed them to do what I was basically enforcing.
I just need a little clarity on something. So it was your ruling and letter that is being appealed today? And what was the gist of your letter again?
The letter basically was acknowledging the fact that there was too much storage up there, that they basically had a special permit to have 90,000 gallons in the in-ground tanks that were demonstrated at the site visit, and that they had gone over that.
Well, I don't understand. You're saying that the operator was in violation, but they're appealing your decision? I don't understand that.
No. I only know, I don't understand, I actually don't understand the appeal. One of the reasons I was having--
You were saying that there was something not in compliance up there?
Correct. There was too much storage there at the time.
So if I understand this, the basis for your issuance of this November 20, 2023 letter is basic relates to storage on the property?
Correct.
Okay. And was that the, is that the only basis for the, you know, for the letter that you sent?
Yes.
Okay.
When you say "at the time," has that since been rectified?
Well, we were just there, and I didn't see the tanks in question.
Okay.
All right. So if I understand it, you issued a letter basically suggesting that, and the basis for this letter related to storage issues. Okay. And my understanding is then the Adlers took an appeal from that. And I guess at this point, I'd like to hear from Attorney Arianti to maybe explain more fully what the appeal consists of and what the basis is.
You know, I can stand up?
Do whatever you want, Nick. It doesn't matter to me.
Actually, I'll probably stand. It makes me better. So I can just provide you some documentation. These are all--
Circulate that.
Yeah. These are all records of the town of Stockbridge, by the way. This is what was applied for in the hearing that you referenced, Tom, that kind of precipitated this series of events. So this application for license that you're looking at, that you're all looking at right there, was not pursuant to the zoning bylaws, having a direct relationship to the special permit or the zoning bylaw. Rather, this is a permit pursuant to Chapter 148, Section 13, which are licenses to operate the gas facility, which presumably would be only applied for and issued and be appropriately applied for pursuant to a use of the property that is permitted under the zoning bylaw. In other words, you can't apply for a license for a use that's not otherwise permitted by the zoning bylaw pursuant to the land, okay, in question. So that application, my understanding is, was precipitated following the trimming of the trees over the summer and the fact that the use of the property, the actual use of the property ongoing as of the summer of 2023 was made blatantly clear and obvious to the Adlers and then to other abutters and neighbors in the neighborhood. Fire chief performed an inspection and issued a cease and desist letter. I believe the date was August 21st. Okay? To cease and desist use of the property, you know, without permits, or without licenses, rather, pursuant to Chapter 148, Section 13, for all of the plethora of uses that were being applied to the property at that point in time. The select board then called for hearing, okay, to hear this application, which was only applied for after the use had been called out as being not permitted pursuant to Chapter 148, Section 13. So the applicant at that point, Superior Gas, not Berkshire Gas, who is the owner of the property, but Superior Gas, then said, well, you're right. I guess we should actually get a permit for all of the uses that were ongoing at that point in time on the property. If you take a look at this application for license, you'll see a whole slew of uses.
Nick, were none of the uses approved prior to this?
Well, so I'll just, to quickly kind of go down the list, there's, you see one on the cover of the letter, methanol, Class 1 use. I don't know what that means, but it's 600 gallons. That was a methanol tank that we saw that was adjacent to the 330,000 gallon tanks. What you see on the second page are maximum quantity LP gas stored in above-ground containers, 24,640 gallons. And you see list sizes capacities of all above-ground containers used for storage, 5 3200 gallon delivery trucks, and 72 to 120 gallon vertical tanks. Mr. Adler's got some photographs to illustrate what the use was at that time that they were looking to permit. After all those uses, you see maximum quantity LP gas stored in underground containers, 90,000 gallons. Okay, list sizes capacities, 3 30,000 gallon tanks. The only storage permitted pursuant to the special permits, which I'll go over in a couple minutes, are the last referenced use, three underground LP storage containers, 90,000 gallon total, that were permitted pursuant to the 1973 and '81 special permits, very specifically for this limited use, limited storage capacity with, limited by visits and use by the permit holder pursuant to those permits. I believe the rest of the, one is the, the rest of the documentation are stating the same things. There's additional restrictions, an emergency plan, which was Page 2 of the permit application. And then you can see some of the documentation plans and so forth, which are plan of the property. And in fact, then there's a survey that's actually on record that's used to delineate the ownership access, et cetera, of a lot of what Berkshire Gas now is the owner of all of it. So that permit hearing occurred, the select board at that time did not grant licenses that were applied for. So currently, they are not licensed for any of those uses as far as I'm aware, pursuant to Chapter 148, Section 13. Just to put some, a little bit more context into the progression of kind of correspondence. On November 9, that was when I sent my request, my original request for enforcement to the building inspector, building commissioner. And it was at that time that I requested enforcement, or requested interpretation of the zoning bylaw and enforcement of the bylaw strictly pursuant to its requirements, and specifically the special permits that were on record, that were granted originally to Berkshire Gas, which permitted first one 30, 1 30,000 gallon tank, 1973, and two more in 1981. After that, Matt, the building inspector, Mr. Colmer's letter was sent on the 20th. And I'm right here. And, oops, I don't need any more paper than you actually need. And one, you've asked for, you know, why is there a U? Well, the basis for the appeal was really twofold. First of all, there was a statement and a reference in the letter, which was a misstatement that I thought was relevant to the substance and finding that he made. And that was that the select board, a special permit granted in 2005 allowed for 90,000 gallons of propane storage. So there was no special permit pursuant to the zoning bylaw in 2005. That was a license application that was granted, I believe, to Osterman in 2005. And that had nothing to do, frankly, with the zoning bylaw or land use availability. Okay? It strictly had to do with gas licensing or gas permitting.
So they got a license to do the gas, but they didn't really have a permit to have it there?
Well, this is where it gets a little bit fuzzy. The license, which I think I do have a copy of, I don't know how long, the license I was granted in 2005, if my memory serves me right, was specifically for this person, for the purpose, the 3 90,000 gallon tank.
Right.
And there it is right here. Store plan of liquids in accordance with Chapter 148, storage 90,000 gallons. So that was it. That was limited. Okay? To that purpose. But this is not a special permit. There is no reconsideration of the use going on at the property at the time. There was no additional use. There's no expansion of use that was permitted at that time for purposes of zoning and purposes of land use benefits. Berkshire Gas is the landowner or any other company who would have assumed those rights, like Alessi, Ostermans, or whomever. There was no expansion, no change in permissive use. The other thing that I requested in my November 9 letter that I thought was lacking from Mr. Colmer's letter of the 20th was a specific finding that any use of the property by the current user, Alessi, which was Spear Gas, that was not specifically permitted by the special permit, whether in 1980, 73, or 71, should be determined to be not a permissible use in violation of zoning bylaws and should be prescribed from any further use as being outside the bounds of the special permit.
Are you suggesting they should rip out the whole 90,000 tank?
No, 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 because I believe that storage for those purposes is still a permissible use. Again, it was permitted. It has not been ceased during the existence of the tank since the '73 or the '81 permit, okay, were granted. What I'm saying is, is any change or additional use of the property that is not included or permitted or prescribed or allowed by either of those two permits is not, is not allowed. Okay? And can be and should be stopped.
What are those uses that are not covered?
Well, fortunately, they applied for a license application for what they were actually doing, what they're actually doing and want to do. So you can look at their amended license application. That's what it is. Okay? That's what they were asking to do after they were ordered by the fire department to clean up all of the tremendously hazardous, unsafe, and unregulated practices that were occurring at the property at the time. Mr. Adler has got some photographs and can kind of illustrate what was going on.
So just so I'm clear, before we go into some other area, you're basically claiming that because Mr. Colmer described whatever it was in 2005 as a special permit as opposed to, as opposed to a license that has all sorts of other implications, number one, and you think he was in error for doing that, and you're suggesting that Mr. Colmer should have, or you want this board to basically, you think Mr. Colmer should have issued a specific finding or conclusion that any, any use of the property not permitted by the special permits of '73 and '81 should be--
Discontinued.
Okay.
Yep.
I see the methanol. Is there, is there something else that you feel is not properly permitted or licensed?
So, well, I mean, I can show you the special permits, and it makes it perfectly clear what is allowed as opposed to what is there and what's not. There's the anchor captain, which is in the ground, which was never applied for, was never, you know, permitted by special permit, and I don't believe was ever licensed pursuant to Chapter 148, Section 13, or any other statute.
Is that information? The captain's not an issue on that part. That is part of the pipeline. The captain has nothing to do with it. That isn't entirely--
Is it inside the pipeline, or is it exterior to it?
It's an underground tank that runs, connected to the pipeline. So having a permit or not licensed, that's over my head, but I know that that was established when the pipeline was put in originally. So as far as us applying for something that wouldn't have anything to do with it. The application for license that we're discussing right now is 100% the result of following what our fire chief wants, wanted us to do. We are not saying that, oh, boy, you caught us with our pants down. Here, now can we be compliant? Not at all. Customary in this industry is you get a storage permit for the storage of your propane, 3 30,000 gallon tanks.
Let me ask you this. Let me ask you this, because I see the $90,000, 90,000 gallon, 3 30, 3 30,000 gallon tanks. And I understand about the delivery trucks. I understand the whole discussion with respect to methanol. I understand your position. I think I understand what he's saying. But you have here, it looks like some additional above-ground storage of 26,640. What is that? I understand the 90,000 underground. I understand the 600 methanol. What does that, what does that 24,640 gallon figure represent here on your license application?
Excuse me, can you state your name before--
I'm Jason with Superior Plus Propane.
Thank you.
And what we, why we added that was because of the business of delivering propane. We had propane delivery trucks on site, and we had propane tanks we brought from references, commercial customers, back and forth. So when you pull a tank, you have a tank in the yard that you pulled out of the field, either for service work, maintenance, or put back out in the field. So those tanks were in the yard. Customary, normal practice, get storage for your bulk, get a permit for your bulk storage, which would be our 330s. The rest of it is considered just part of the business, just, you know, just more of a customary type of accessory, just like the methanol is required. Interpretation from the fire chief, I need the, all of these on a license. Okay? I mean, we can be compliant with, you know, if this is how we want to go, it's how we'll go. So thus went with the permit to become compliant from what the fire chief is asking of us.
But are these now absent from the property?
None of that is there. So we have, because of the verdict, which we got an enforcement, which is why we're all here today. You already had the enforcement. I'm not quite sure why there's an appeal. You already received--
So the 24,640 has been removed. Those were all the small tanks that--
They're all gone.
--we saw a picture of in the Berkshire Edge.
As well as the 72, 120.
Everyone was there tonight. There is nothing there other than those men.
Okay. So really, what you're looking at then is you have the 93 30,000 gallon tanks there, which are underground, and you've got this 600 gallon methanol, which I understand that may be a different interpretation from the, from the Adlers, but your contention is that's not a whole lot different and safer than sticking a hose in the back of a truck in 1973 to make sure that the, the gas is safely transported? Can I kind of sum that up?
Correct.
All right.
And to that point, we didn't want to put it on that application because we weren't obligated to. This was a request from the fire chief.
Okay, I understand all that. But I, we're just trying to understand exactly what's there. Okay. I interrupted you. I'll let you continue with your presentation. I see David wants to say something, and perhaps you do too, Nick.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to make one point, and then I know that David wanted to put some context into--
Sure.
You know, our use, which is, some of which has been conformed, and some of which has been not. And I, I provided each of you copies of the special permits, just so you would have those 1973, 1981. And we're specifically able to see what was permitted by those permits. I think substance, what David can explain at this point, and Stephanie, is that while some of the particularly, what we would say expansive use, I think they would say violative use on property, some of it has been kind of conformed to a more appropriate use based on what the documentation is. The underlying use that was permitted pursuant to the special permits, specifically including how the property is used as a refilling depot and facility, okay, for very, very, very regular, consistent gas truck traffic, in and out, unloading the 18-wheelers to fill the 3 30,000 gallon tanks, and then runs in and off the property, which Mr. Wild referenced when we were there at the property multiple times a day, is a dramatically and drastically different use. And an expansion of the intensity of the use on the property then was contemplated by the 1973, 1981 permits.
Did those permits have any limitations on truck activity?
Yes, specific.
Tell us.
Well, the 73 permit, which is the original permit, specifically provided paragraph for about three-quarters of the way down. That use would be only an average of 24 times, 24 days per year. Case of emergency, it would be about four days at most. It would be in use for about four days at the most. Propane would come over land in trucks owned by Berkshire Gas, from its center in New York. Site would be fenced with a six-foot-high fence, with screening of shrubs and trees, so the site would not be visible from the highway. But the specific use and intensity, again, that was described at the site in some good detail by Mr. Wild, and I think by others, and David can allude to some of it as well. It changed when the underlying use of the property changed, and it went away from the gas shaving use and a true kind of emergency need because there was insufficient service capacity. And that the, that was the original use. That's why the intensity use was limited. Okay? And these two special permits. And it's really just one special permit. One contemplated the total. It was, they faced the two and. But the intent, as permitted by these two special permits, was never to allow the land use to be as intense as it is these days with daily, regular truck traffic-- with daily, regular truck traffic in and out and local service on a constant basis. Now, David wants to, and I would like to put some facts recently to, you know, the basis for why we're here. And I think he wanted to describe that and, and, you know, put, again, some facts to his experiences, direct butter.
Looks like you have graphics too.
I do have graphics. It's entirely up to you whether you want to see them. I would like to thank the zoning board of appeals for allowing us the opportunity to address our concerns as relates to the ruling made by the Stockbridge Zoning Enforcement Officer on November 20th, 2023. My name is David Adler. My wife Stephanie and I live at Seven Lee Road in Stockbridge. We are primary abotters of the property at Nine Lee Road in Stockbridge, as both the north side and east side of our property about the property in question. Before I begin with my comments, we'd respectfully ask that this board consider only addressing our specific concerns as regards to the zoning issues and special permits that we have inquired about. The safety concerns at Nine Lee Road are ongoing and will continue to be addressed by the Stockbridge Fire Chief with our input. The environmental concerns at Nine Lee Road are also ongoing and are being addressed by the Stockbridge Conservation Commission as well as the Commonwealth's Berry Tank Division at the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. As such, this is a pretty complicated topic. So with the board's indulgence, I'd like to read my comments as we don't want to accidentally forget anything. In addition, we think it's important for our neighbors and our abotters that are present to understand the issues that we feel need to be addressed by this board. After my comments, we'll certainly attempt to answer any and all questions that the ZBA might have for us. Almost 51 years ago, on May 7th, 1973, there was a hearing held at Town Hall on that side of Main Street in Stockbridge at which the opportunity was given to all those interested, be heard in favor or in opposition to allow Berkshire Gas Company to receive a special permit to operate a peak shaving plant in a residential neighborhood at Nine Lee Road in Stockbridge. The special permit would allow Berkshire Gas to store 30,000 gallons of liquefied petroleum gas in one singular tank with the possibility of adding two additional 30,000 gallon tanks for potential overall capacity of 90,000 gallons. For those unfamiliar with the reason it is called peak shaving plant is that the gas is shaved off or removed from the larger Kinder Morgan pipeline at times of higher demand. The location of this facility was important at that time and still is today because of its proximity to the Tencoville Pipeline, which is now owned by Kinder Morgan. The Berkshire Gas representative stated at that time that the stored propane would be blended with the natural gas coming through the pipeline. And the basic purpose of the installation was so that it would be a standby for the natural gas in the pipeline and would be only used on an average of perhaps 24 days per year. The select board unanimously approved the special permit in 1973. Then in 1981, when Berkshire Gas wanted their two additional 30,000 gallon tanks, they came before the select board for an additional special permit. The application was described as additional storage to increase supplementary gas supply. In the minutes from that meeting, there are numerous instances where Mr. Hertel from Berkshire Gas mentioned that the propane will be supplementing the natural gas line that is going to those large mounted tanks. The permit for Berkshire Gas to have three 30,000 gallon tanks in total was approved in 1981. It is important to note that both the 1973 and 1981 permits do not mention any requests to turn off the natural gas line to the tanks, no mention of increasing the use beyond the requested 24 days per year, and no mention of turning Nine Lee Road into a propane depot. The sole purpose surrounding the request for the two special permits was due to its proximity to the natural gas pipeline. And when I say that the property is now being used as a propane depot, I'm referring to the fact that 18-wheelers are now routinely entering the property almost daily and dropping off their load of propane into the tanks, and then smaller bobtail delivery trucks then remove the propane from those tanks and take the propane out for delivery. This activity is not limited any time or day of the week. It is a true 24/7, 365 operation. In addition, these two permits had conditions attached to them that included limiting the use of the pink shaving plant to 24 days a year, as I just mentioned, as well as screening the property with trees and shrubs and fencing the property. Approximately 10 years later, in the mid-'90s, we bought the property at Seven Lee Road, and shortly thereafter, the McDonald's bought their property at Seven, Three Lee Road. It's important to understand that when the neighborhood started to build houses, it was always in accordance with the zoning of the town of Stockbridge. We believed that we had an expectation that all zoning and special permits that were in force at that time would continue to be enforced, that any changes or amendments to the, to the special permits that were granted at Berkshire Gas at Nine Lee Road would be brought before the select board for consideration, and that the directive abotters would be given the opportunity to communicate our approval or disapproval during that process. In 2005, Berkshire Gas apparently started to lease the permitted tanks and most of the property at Nine Lee Road to Osterman Propane. The natural gas line was apparently either disconnected or shut off between the Kinder Morgan pipeline and the 330,000 gallon tanks. With the line shut off, Berkshire Gas was leasing this new and unpermitted propane depot to Osterman Propane. So now, instead of the propane being supplemental gas, as was granted in the previous two permits, the propane was now going to the sole, going to be the sole gas in the large mounted tanks. When I say apparently, the line was caught or shut off from the natural gas line of the large tanks in 2005 is because there are zero records from the town that there was ever a gas inspection performed by the town gas inspector. So to recap, that line was cut from the natural gas line to the large mounted tanks and turned Nine Lee Road into a propane depot that could be located anywhere, not just at Nine Lee Road and not in a residential neighborhood. We strongly believe that the type of business at Nine Lee Road changed substantially in 2005. We further believe that the letter from the Stockbridge Building Inspector mistakenly references a select board special permit granted in 2005 that allowed 90,000 gallons of propane storage. And the letter fails to make any determination or finding that Berkshire Gas Company's activities at Nine Lee Road today violated, violated the Stockbridge zoning bylaws and continue to violate the two special permits that were granted to Berkshire Gas on May 25, 1973, and June 16, 1981, respectively. The Stockbridge Select Board did not grant a special permit in 2005 to Berkshire Gas Company. The Select Board did, however, grant a license dated January 5th, as our attorney mentioned earlier, number 20, number 9805, pursuant to Mass. General Law 148, Fire Prevention to Berkshire Gas. The 2005 license conferred absolutely no rights, benefits, or privileges to Berkshire Gas pursuant to the Stockbridge zoning bylaws or Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 48 of the Mass. Zoning Act. Rather, its effect was only to sanction the storage of propane on the property in accordance with MGL Chapter 148, Fire Prevention. The necessity of the 2005 license was occasioned due to the underlying use of the property allowed by the 73 and 81 permits. And such a license should have been sought in 1981 when the use was expanded from a single 30,000 gallon tank to three 30,000 gallon tanks, but Berkshire Gas failed to do so. The above-described uses of the property memorialized by the 73 and 81 special permits represent the limit of uses permitted by Berkshire Gas on the property unless those uses are permitted by right under the Stockbridge zoning bylaws or unless they are granted another special, special permit modifying the permitted uses. Accordingly, we request the ZBA make a definitive and final determination restricting Berkshire Gas's use of the property in accordance with the law and in accordance with the 73 and 81 permits. Furthermore, none of the three conditions, none of the three conditions are currently being met by Berkshire Gas that were included in the special permitting process. The property user is utilizing the property far in excess of the 24 days that were granted to them. The trees, a few months ago, had their limbs completely removed from the ground up. And the fence that Berkshire Gas installed was a chain-link fence, which was, which we questioned the appropriateness of the town of Stockbridge. In conclusion, the abotters take no issue with the permits that were granted appropriately in 73 and 81 to allow the 330,000 gallon tanks for the peak shaving plant and Nine Lee Road as part of the peak shaving process. We only ask that those permits be enforced as granted and the specifically approved conditions of those permits be enforced by this board as well. In the future, should the property owners at Nine Lee Road choose to abandon the appropriately permitted peak shaving plant, that amendment on the screening that was a requirement of the two permits be remediated appropriately.
The 2005...
License.
Yeah, now, by then, was it known that Osterman was using us as a depot?
No.
When did, when did that happen?
August.
But I mean, when did the depot activity?
2005.
In 2005.
I can show you, I can show you pictures of the screening, and it was very, it was excellent screening. It was very good. We had no idea what was going on back there.
The gentleman from Superior...
Because 2005, we purchased propane from Berkshire Gas Company. So Berkshire Gas Company was in the propane business. They stopped using it for peak shaving. They had bobtails. They had tanks. They delivered propane from that depot. Osterman came in and purchased Berkshire Gas. So we did not expand it. We purchased what was already existing.
How long had Berkshire Gas been in that propane business? From that, from that location?
Somewhere in the '80s. So shortly after that second, those two tanks, and shortly after that, they were delivering propane, just the same as we are today. So that's how we've gotten involved.
Well, just so I'm clear, I mean, if you go and you apply for a license, and this is an annual event, I mean, my sense is, and correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that something that the fire chief goes out there to look at to see if there's certain safety things, make sure that Department of Public Utilities regulations and everything else is, are, are complied with? I mean, not having ever attended any of these, is there anybody that can shed any light as to, as to what happens when there is an actual license application? Is there an inspection by anybody?
In 50 years, it was never an inspection done by the fire chiefs in Stockbridge.
That's not true.
It's accurate. There are no records of it.
We have records of...
We can't have, we can't have two people speaking at the same time. Well, hear me out. If I understand, you're, you're, it's your testimony, Mr. Adler, that you're not aware of any, any inspections done by any police, fire personnel or anybody that would have any expertise on that area?
That's according to the fire chief. That is accurate.
He has no, he has no records of inspections.
It'd be nice if the fire chief told us that. Now you, I take it, have a different view of this?
So the inspection side of it, 2021, we did more piping that we discussed on site. And at that point, we had an inspection to look at that piping.
Who actually performed the inspection?
Previous fire chief.
So it's your contention, sir, that the fire chief actually did some sort of an inspection a couple of years ago?
If I could also address some of the things, just to point out again that we are operating off of what already was established through Berkshire Gas. We purchase Berkshire Gas. The only growth that has happened or changed is that we have continued to grow the business in this area, which means many more customers in this area. Safety concerns, I mean, we pride ourselves on safety. Now, at the time when fire chief was there, it was untidy. I'll give you that for sure. It is not unsafe. There are issues and concerns on every facility, which we pointed out while you were there. Everything is in a safe condition and is working properly and always has been with documentation and inspection.
All right, well, I can, I, I guess our purview here is to try to assess the use issue, okay? Whatever safety, it would appear that whatever issue there was that was cleaned up at some point as a result of some inspection.
Yeah, we followed everything that you've asked, building commissioners asked us to. We've done everything that the fire chief has asked us to. Here we are again today.
But I thought you couldn't apply for a license without a permit. Is that correct order? You have to apply for a permit first and then apply for the license?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think the theory, it's not just a theory. I think what, you know, part of what we're saying and part of the way use of a property happens is when a use is particularly, when it's a use that is not permitted in a municipality.
You're not going to get a license.
First of all, when it's not permitted by right, you know, you need a special permit. First of all, you need to be compliant with the zoning bylaw for whatever use that is, unless you have an exemption that you're nonprofit or otherwise exempt from zoning. So you have to demonstrate that the underlying use or the substantive use on the property is permitted by the zoning bylaw in order to, for anybody to make advantage of it. So that's number one. Number two, once you've established that you have a zoning or land use right, use the property in the manner for which you're proposing you want to use it, then there are other requirements that need to comply with. In this case, such as, you know, hazardous materials, gasoline storage and use. Okay, it's like applying for, you know, a liquor license somewhere. You need to make sure that you can run a restaurant or a hotel or a liquor store in a certain part of town, right, before you can get your liquor license.
Right.
That comes only after you've established that that property can be used for those purposes. So in this case, it's the same thing. The underlying substantive use needs to be demonstrated to be compliant with the land use laws. Those are the zoning bylaws. And in this case, you know, the progression was, and this is the 1967 zoning bylaws, this use of the gas facility, natural gas facility, was a permitted use only pursuant to a special permit. That's why they were allowed correctly, Berkshire Gas at the time, to apply for the 1971 special, right, 1973 special permit. And were appropriately, as Mr. Adler mentioned, granted that underlying use for initially one 30,000 gallon storage tank with the potential to install the two additional 30,000 gallon storage tanks at a later time. They went ahead in 1981 and took advantage of that additional use that they had kind of alluded to in 1973, and amended their permit, and were permitted that underlying use of the property, zoning use of the property. I do believe at that time, they actually had proper licensing as well for, for this use, but not for any use outside of or in addition to that storage use of 30,000 gallon storage tanks.
Well, let me ask you this. I mean, obviously, one of the questions and one of the things that I'm, I'm at least looking at is you have a condition here. You, we all know about the special permit in 73, the special permit in 81. We know what it says. I've actually read through the materials before the hearing. I guess my question is, and the best information we have is that at some point in the 1980s, Berkshire Gas apparently got involved or became engaged in the sale of propane. I can, I can surmise somewhat akin to what these people are doing now and what was done by Osterman in 2005. I guess my question is, I mean, in that set, in that set of circumstances, you know, you're looking at a, a use that's been in play, at least, at least according to what this gentleman says, from a prior owner for 20-plus years. I mean, is there, is there any kind of a way to look at this? That this has gone on for such a long time, almost akin to an adverse possession kind of issue?
Well, so, Tom, I will address that notion. And I think in the case of a use that's been specifically granted for specific uses pursuant to a special permit that is specifically granted for a clear use, an expansion, even a reasonable expansion over time, is not permissible, okay? This is a very different situation from an existing non-conforming use, okay? That preceded the establishment of zoning, that preceded any permissive restriction on use of the property, okay? Were that to be the case, and if that was in fact the case, then the law does provide for some reasonable expansion, some reasonably expanded use, okay, consistent with and not substantively different from a prior use. But any change in use would require, where that use has been granted by a special permit, would require a modification of the special permit if it was available, simply changing the use and then saying, whoa, you know, we were allowed to do this thing, but we changed it, where the original use was mandated and permitted only by a special permit is a different situation. And, you know, there is a lengthy record, if you do look at all of the, all the documentation that is on file with the town clerk, special permit, license applications, even though they're not there every year consistently, the represented use, okay, right up until 2023, was three 30,000 gallon storage tanks, no change, whether under zoning land use or whether under licensing pursuant to Chapter 148, okay, Section 13. The reality is that there was a substantial change in substantive use in the property at, at the very latest in 2005. at the very latest in 2005. But it sounds like from the information that's been put on the record, well in advance of that in the 80s. And I think that doesn't make it permissible in this case.
I want to just kind of summarize what I think has happened. I'm sorry, Catherine, do you want to go?
I have, I do have a couple of questions. It's true, is it not, that the special permits issued do not have any conditions on them? I do understand in the minutes of the hearing, there's a reference to 24 days and approximately. But those, is it, is it safe to say that those were not implemented by the select board as conditions of the permit?
Yeah, they weren't, they weren't specifically, I think, called at that point in time, conditions. But considering that they were rolled into the substance of the special permit, they were certainly relied upon in the decision-making process for what was a permissible use.
Oh, there's no doubt that the select board thought that that was the intended use, but it's.
They're not, they're, they aren't specifically articulated as conditions.
So when, when, I'm sorry, when we were there, what we were told, that there was three 30,000 gallon tanks. And there was the small tank of the, what is it? Methanol?
Methanol.
Methanol, okay. But there's, but then I heard, we've cleaned it up as the fire chief asked. What was it that you cleaned up?
You've got pictures, right? You want to show?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. My pleasure.
So I have a list of what we have done since our first visit after the meeting.
So all of these tanks back here, these are all behind my house. They were all full of, of different amounts of propane. There are no barriers, no strike barriers around them. There were over almost 300 tanks in various sizes. Trucks were just driving around these haphazardly, stacked like cordwood, tipped on top of each other, no idea this was going on whatsoever behind my house. None. Not, not a clue. All of these tanks, all of them, unpermitted. The trucks that you see, unpermitted to be parked there at night. The, the methanol, unpermitted. All of this. The 55 gallon leaking drums back there, unpermitted. You can see this, this, this tank right here has a little faucet on it. That's how they got the, the methanol out right there. This tank right over here, which I just found out tonight, has methanol in it, was unpermitted. Was denied in November, and I just found tonight, out tonight, there's still methanol in it. Shocked.
That's not true.
Okay. Well, I'll be, I'll be talking to the fire chief tomorrow. I can assure you of that.
Okay, well, I have a paperwork here.
Okay, that's fine. So there's more 55 gallon drums here, all of these tanks.
Those have all been removed.
These have all been removed. That's correct. The screening that we're talking about is, this is what it looks like, this is what it looked like at my house. This is what it looks like at my house today.
The tree trimming really took away your, your cover.
Yeah. And that's why we had, that's why, excuse me.
Yep, let me go.
You, you can see what the issue is as far as the screening is concerned.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Wild said that there was some requirement to.
The requirement was to remove, was to move, was to remove the branches on one side of the trees, and they chose to remove the branches around the entire tree.
Okay.
Yeah, so our alternative at this point was removing trees completely via Kinder Morgan pipeline. We had an opportunity to speak with the Adlers after this had happened. And we apologized. It looked goofy. It made everything very uncomfortable for them. We offered whatever we could to try to make it right. We said that we would run some screening to cover those trees. We would assist with planting new trees. Whatever it would be, we were open to that. When we left, we thought we had a neighborly agreement and turned out into the select meeting. It was considered a payoff, I guess.
Well, I mean, just.
I want to address, though, the other thing. We don't have any environmental concerns. The EPA was there. There's no problems. All right? We went through everything that they've been trying to push on us. If you look at those photos and look at what it was tonight, there is nothing there that can go wrong or is in a haphazard way that you're speaking of. We have done everything that you.
Well, you responded after the spotlight was put on that property and you guys cleaned up your act essentially, once the
Correct.
the government got involved. Let me just make sure I have the order of this in my head correctly. Berkshire Gas had natural gas up there. They had the propane tanks to use to help supplement the natural gas during peak uses. So the original purpose of those tanks was as part of a natural gas process. Somewhere along the way, Berkshire Gas said, well, we got the propane tanks. Let's do a little propane business. So they got the bulb trucks and they started delivering some propane. I don't know whether they had a permit or a right to do that at that time. Osterman comes along and says, here's a nice facility. We're in the natural, we're in the propane business. We'll take that over. And then Superior buys Osterman. So one question would be, when Berkshire Gas decided, well, we got these tanks here. We've got the propane. We're not really using them very much for our peak loads on the natural gas. Let's go into the propane business for home delivery. Was that a legal event at that time? Because it's, it's based on that, that subsequently the other company said, you know, kept handling the ball onto the next guy. That moment, when they went into the propane business, did they have a license? Did they have authority? Did they have a permit to go from the natural gas business, using propane as a supplement, to the propane business?
So it is assumed that they had it because of the license for the storage.
Well, I think that becomes a crux of a lot of this, of this discussion as to when, you know, all of the stuff that's going on there today flows back to that time. Whatever date it was, when Berkshire Gas went into the propane business, were they able to do that? Your opinion?
No.
How come?
Well, because it was a change in use of the property. Again, it changed intensity of the property. And I did want to point out, you know, the relevancy of the fact that the use, the establishment of the use in the R2 zoning district, because the residential 2A zoning district is where this was. It was permissible to have this gas facility or a gas facility in the district by special permit at that time. It's no longer available. That ceased to be an available or permissible use, whether by right, by special permit at all, became a not, you know, permissible use shortly after the 1967. So they, they got it right. The timing was right to make it permissible. At the point that the use changed and the intensity of use of the property changed from the excess capacity storage to kind of regular, I'll call it, maintenance of customers from that facility, the identity of the property and how it was used changed. And that would have required a modification of the special permit at that point in time to state that we've changed how the, what the primary use of the property is for. And particularly as it relates to a direct abouter in a residential neighborhood, the number of truck visits per year, per day, the number of truck visits per week and per year, the intensity of the use. You know, it's my understanding that when the 18-wheelers offload, which is nearly once a day, is my understanding. Now, you know, they idle there for an hour, filling up the 30,000 gallon tanks. And then the service trucks come in, what, four to four approximately, could be a few more, could be less times a day, up and down the road to do their fill-ups. And, you know, potentially can, or potentially are accessing that use, you know, at all hours. Typically, I think it's, you know, from very, very early in the morning, six o'clock till seven, eight o'clock. But when there's an emergency need, you know, any hour of the day. The intensity of the use, the number of the use, and the manner in which the site is being used changed significantly at that point in time when it became not a excess shaving, peak shaving facility for natural gas and strictly emergency excess storage use and a regular supply.
So would you say that if it was inappropriate for Berkshire Gas to go into the retail propane business?
Well, they can go into whatever business they want.
At that location?
Not at that location.
Okay. That the subsequent users or the subsequent companies that took over from them were basically in the same violation as the original?
Yeah.
So are you suggesting that the companies, Osterman and then Superior, that their attorneys, when putting this deal together, did shoddy due diligence? Or do you think they saw the permit and assumed that this was, that the current usage was a natural extension of what was in the permit? Obviously, you don't know. I'm not asking you to read your mind. Yeah, no, I know. But that's what I, that's what I'm having trouble wrapping my head around.
Yeah.
Is how, how these real deals could have.
Pretty big piece of due diligence. Well, I don't know. Yes, I'm sorry.
My name is Bill Martin. Martin office, as I represent Berkshire Gas.
Oh, good.
Coming into this, about two days' notice, I'm coming up this way. It does seem to me that there may be some additional facts, really historic facts, that if we could get the questions framed and try to find the right people to get the answers. What I'm, what I'm anticipating, from what I've seen in some of the stuff that I've gotten from Nick, that I appreciate in some of the documents I've got the last couple of days. Berkshire Gas was in the propane business in the 80s. So shortly after this facility was permitted, they did get in the, in the, in the retail home propane business, which is the business enterprise, which they ultimately sold off to Osterman, which now is either merged with or sold off to Superior. And that happened in 2003 to 2005 time range. The transaction between Berkshire Gas and, and Osterman at the time, Berkshire Gas sells all the assets and leases the property for a very nominal amount for two 25-year terms. So for all practical purposes, Superior now is the owner of the property for all practical purposes for the next 45 years. The question that Nick was addressing, which I, I think is a, is a more nuanced legal question, which is, number one, what did the special permit actually permit? Okay? So is it restricted so that it's one use? Or is it broad enough to have included, to your point about whether the conditions were just discussion in the meeting or whether those are specific conditions? That's important that we haven't really drilled into that. Presuming shortly after the permit was granted, Berkshire Gas did go into the propane business and even assuming for the moment that that violated or expanded the terms of the special permit at that point. And so if somebody at that point objected, they should have come in and gotten an amendment to that special permit. The next question is, what happens over the next 40 years? I'm back here doing a little on-the-fly legal research. And I think there's a pretty good argument that there's a latches type argument, sort of a statute of limitations argument on the enforcement by the town. If a use has gone on for such an extended period of time. And again, we're not talking about incremental change in the use. We're talking about, in, in the 80s, they go in the home delivery business. That's the business that Superior is in now. Then you get into the subtlety in terms of whether that customer volume increases. There's an awful lot of case law, if you have a special permit to do something, and the intensity of that use changes. There's discretion within the building inspector to decide at what point in some continuum that requires, you know, further relief. And, and quite frankly, there's a whole other body of case law that says, even if you got to that conclusion, you'd have to put a great big grace period in there for Superior or Berkshire or whoever to come back in and say, look, we have the special permit. This activity's been going on for 40 years. We haven't changed the activity. You know, to the point of, we should modify the special permit. But I think you're a ways from that because I think you got to go back. And quite frankly, I'm taking notes here to get, to get the right person from Berkshire Gas probably to come back in to a subsequent meeting to say to you what was going on in 1980, in the 1980s. Thankfully, Berkshire Gas, although it's been merged into a couple of different companies, there's a lot of people that are still in the Berkshire, a lot of institutional knowledge that we have, we have contact with. So I, I think we can drill down a little further, if that's your pleasure. I also wonder, you know, just again, sort of at a, at a higher level, whether or not the enforcement is down to that level of detail. It seems to me the original enforcement was about the, the tanks, the extras, the stuff that's been cleaned up. That was the enforcement that went in and was complied with. And so now that that's been done, we're back to, you know, this other problem. My last point, and I'll, and I'll stop for a moment, is I do a lot of gas line work, a lot of gas line easement work. It is unusual, and it is particularly unusual for Kinder Morgan to allow anything to grow on its gas line. Okay? They, they have sheeps and goats that go clear their gas lines. They clear cut their gas lines. You look across where a Kinder Morgan gas line is, and you know where it is because it's cut to the ground. And, and, and I will say that, all things aside, Kinder Morgan come in tomorrow and say, we're taking every piece of vegetation down to the dirt. And, and the width, the 50, probably 50 or 100 foot width of the easement. And they would be completely within their right to do that. So I understand, I mean, I was out there. I looked at the trees this afternoon, like, oh, God, this is faster. But the fact of the matter is, for that, there's a remedy for that that is less draconian than where you all are right now. That's, that's my.
In the original special permit, though, I thought that it was agreed upon that there would be trees. And there was like, you know, so they wouldn't be seen by the highway. And it would only be the top of the roof by, you know, Route 7 and so on and so forth. So how can they?
Whether that's, whether that's a condition or not, or a discussion in a meeting is a different story. But also where the trees would have been, there may be screening, but, you know. Again, I wasn't there. I was 19 years old, maybe less. You know, the fact of the matter is that Berkshire Gas could not have told Kinder Morgan what to do with their pipeline even then, when it was Tennessee Gas.
So I just, this might be a strange analogy, but it's the only thing I can think of. So if I own a liquor store and I need to get a, I get a permit and I get a license for the liquor store, just kind of like this. Somebody else comes along and buys my liquor store and says, well, I got a license, so it's liquor. So I think I'll change it to a distillery. So wouldn't they have to go and get?
That's that point. Berkshire Gas was, literally, the Berkshire Gas equipment was repainted to say Osterman. I mean, it was the same business. It was the same employees. They sold that division lock, stock and barrel. So it, it would be like if you sold your liquor store and all of a sudden, instead of you being standing behind the counter, this gentleman was standing behind the counter. And that was the difference at the time. They, they changed their uniforms. They changed their name tags. And that was it.
Right, but they, but it's the use that's in question. Okay.
The use that, the use that has changed, and I, and maybe even address this, but I doubt the use has changed much since, between Osterman and Superior. Probably a lot of the same employees.
Let me, please identify yourself, sir.
My name is Jim McCallum. I'm in the butter. I own this 68-year easement going through the whole direction of that property. And could I have a minute to just speak a little bit here? You know, I find this is an extremely difficult situation in many ways. You know, I mean, it's like, I come in here, it could be very angry. And who am I angry at? Am I angry at the town of Stockbridge and the list of, you know, employees in Stockbridge that, you know, somebody should have picked up on this over the years? Am I angry at Berkshire Gas because as time went on, so do requirements? Annual inspections on these tanks, they were never done. So, you know, why were they never done? The engineers that worked for Berkshire Gas must have known, oh, with the new regulations, we should be getting these tanks inspected every year. Never done. So, you know, it's, you know, and you guys here, I really thank a lot because you guys are the, going to be the ones to pick up the pieces here. You know, there's a lot that's been going on for a lot of years that's just been out of sight, out of mind. And, you know, I am concerned about the safety aspects of it. I know this is a zoning thing. But, you know, you know, the Mercaptain is a very, very extremely dangerous material. I know it's been there, whatever, but everything I read at it, the worst thing for that is water. And certainly over the last couple of years, we've had more rain than, you know, ever. You know, the gardens, everything, all that rain, and that's the worst thing for them, Mercaptain. So, but, and it's just, when I talk to, you know, I, I get on a scene and what's safe, what's not safe. I was five years in the military. I was five years in the military, 30-year vocational teacher, I'm on the Stockbridge Fire Department. So it's like, okay, what are the safety issues here? That's the first thing you look at. And it just seems like there's so much. Those tanks that were stored like that were, for years. And I did mention it to several people, and I don't want to get into pointing fingers, I don't want any. But when the new chief came in, I said, those tanks, you know, they're stacked up like corwood up there. About a week later, he comes, he says, oh, you're going to have to talk to Chief Brown. That's leaked. I'm like, wait a minute. You know, I feel as though there's a lot of people that have lived in Stockbridge, but on committees, paid employees, that never knew that property existed up there. They've driven by it 30 years. It's like, wow, I never knew that was up there. And I think that Berkshire Gas kind of took advantage of that. There were times I feel like they should have been, oh, you know, we're required now to have inspections. And yes, when they, you know, got their permit and inspected when they changed the gas over, we learned about it when they set up these huge flamethrowers and lit this gas off that was probably going 100, 100 feet. We're all like, oh my God, what's going on over there? You know, so, you know, I don't want to be pointing fingers at any one person, any group of people, but there's a lot of people over the years that did disservice to us, the neighbors of that property. You know, I bought that property and I walked it, you know, on cross-country skis when I bought it 30 years ago. And I saw the gas company there. I have on our mortgage the easements from both the gas lines going through there. So I didn't buy something that, you know, I'm in here complaining about. I just am a naive person, I guess, that thought, everything was in line here. The town of Stockbridge is doing their job, Berkshire Gas is doing their job, and now I'm sitting here saying, nobody's did their job. You know, it's, there's a lot of people here that allowed this to happen. And whether it's, you know, because of, they just know about it, you know, does that make it right, does that make it wrong? I don't know. But I really think that that's not the piece of property for, when you went to do your site, is it coming down that hill tonight? I'm sure there was patches of ice there. Okay, you're, you're coming down there with a tanker full of gas, and it's basically a school bus stop at the bottom for the Keenan's house, that, that's where the school bus stops. It, it's just not the piece of property to be running this type of business out of. So when zoning and you guys are looking at what should be done out of here, you know, I, I just hope that everybody does the right thing and, you know, everything's just, you know, I, you know, and I want to leave it at that because, you know, I don't want to be pointing fingers, I don't want to be, but well, I just feel like there's been a lot of people that have been negligent on this piece of property, and we really, you know, something has to be rectified here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the group have any comments or questions?
I just want to echo, right, of it, number one.
And what's your name, sir?
Jeremy Beckus. And the moment when I was pretty stunned was when they were burning off the gas with this big pipe up in the air and a flame going 30, 40 feet off. And it was roaring away there, no one around. I was amazed. I walked up to just sort of see the thing because of the noise it made as I was walking down the street. And, and I, I just echoed what Jim was saying there, how I naively thought, well, it must be okay. You know, this must be all kind of being taken care of the way it should be, there must be permits, and I, I didn't know anything. And now, it seems to me over decades of time, long before I came, I've been here 15 years, that a slide has taken place from certain very clear usage to a whole other thing. And, and like, like Jim says, I, I can't point a finger, I don't want to point a finger particularly at any party. But this is not the kind of activity to have in our area where people live, like Tulsa. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the group?
I'm also on one Lee Road, Marika Pango, and the number of trucks that come through Lee Road, I'm always shocked to see these big tankers coming by and then numerous smaller ones, and I find it very dangerous.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
Comment towards that. I mean, I, from a small town myself, I really appreciate everyone giving their input. I mean, it's constant improvement is what we all need to strive for. I mean, even back in the 70s, they didn't have seatbelts in a lot of cars. We just thought that was okay. As we progressed, everyone needs to wear a seatbelt. And even, even currently, doors fly off of airplanes, you know? They're not supposed to happen, but they do. So we're constantly working to get better. I mean, we're not looking to get away with anything. We want to be above the board. I can't speak to who was in control before me. I can tell you the staff we have now, myself and leadership, that's our priority, to make sure this is right. We went to the Adlers and McDonald's, we spoke, we talked about what was going on, and we offer any assistance that you can come up with, we want to make it right. We moved our equipment out, we put a little bit of hardship on our staff. They're going different places to start and finish now. That's not what they signed up for, but they're going along with it. They have some workers here, some drivers here now, they just kind of wanted to come and say, hey, this is concerning our lives too. So they wanted positive input as well. So I just want to say, we hear you, we're not ignoring, we're working always to get better. The flame was, is maybe an educational thing. It is normal practice, but awareness probably would have been better, right? To know what was going on, when it was going to happen, and let you know. And that's, that's the part where we can institute a SOP to say, okay, if we're going to do this, we need to give everyone in the neighborhood a week notice with a date and time.
Jason, where's the next nearest Superior depot?
Look, at this point, and this is something that typically, as a ZBA, what we usually do is we have a meeting, we usually have a site inspection the following week in order to permit the board to digest the information that we received. This time, we had planned, I think, to render a decision today. I'm going to unilaterally make the determination that I think we need to have more information. I think, I understand the arguments being advanced by, capably by Attorney Ariente with respect to what the effect of a special permit is, and that under the zoning regulations extent, at the time of this application for the special permit in 1973, this was permitted. And there is some language in there to suggest what, what, what actually was discussed by the select board and what was contemplated. But I'm also troubled by the fact, by the issue that's been raised by Catherine, which is, is what we see here in this record from 1973 and 1981, are the comments made and the discussions, is that enough to really impose special conditions that attach to this permit? I don't know. I'm also sort of, for lack of a better phrase, thinking, and while the term lashes was used by Attorney Martin, my thought was adverse possession, but the same theory of, that is, if the town doesn't do something over a certain amount of time, what happens in that circumstance? And what I really want to do, and I think what I'm going to, what I'm going to solicit from Town Council, is a legal opinion with respect to the effect of a special permit, with or without conditions. I would also invite Attorney Ariente to flesh out, if he can, with case law, some of the, some of the statements that he's made with respect to the operative effect of a special permit. And indeed, if Attorney Martin has any legal insights to share with respect to the doctrine of latches that he's outlined, we'd be interested to see it. The other thing is, I would like to flesh out, if it's all possible, exactly what happened with Berkshire Gas and how it all came about, that we went from a circumstance where they basically stored a bunch of gas for emergencies to a circumstance which we have now, where we basically have an ongoing propane business. And I'm kind of curious how all that happened. One of the things I really am very baffled by, and I understand the distinction between an application for a license and a special permit, and I, when I read the letter that was written by our building inspector, I don't really attach the sort of legal significance that maybe one might, simply because I'm not sure a building inspector spent hours trying to divine the difference between the two. But I, I'm baffled and puzzled as to why, if you look, there are a number of special licenses that were issued, I went through the record, but did anybody ever go out there to actually look, and what did they see? And, you know, what transpired there? How did it come to pass that Berkshire Gas was doing whatever they were doing in the late 80s, and here we are now in 2023, faced with this issue? So what I'm going to propose is that we meet again three weeks from now. And the reason I say that is because I'm going to be away for two weeks, and this is not the sort of meeting I want to do via Zoom. And I think that would give us ample time to sort of understand some of the legal issues. And I guess I would invite Attorney Ariente and anyone else that's interested to give us a little legal assistance by way of case law or the like. Maybe if you get that to us sometime in the next two weeks, so we have a week to digest that and reconvene, whatever three weeks from today is.
The 20th.
I'm sorry?
The 20th of February.
And I guess the other question, I guess I have, Teresa, is we have certain dates that we have to make decisions by? Are we running into that date?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Do you have the folder with you?
I have a folder, but you have to interpret it for me. Let's see. You tell me, I'll let you be my guy here.
Hey, Tom, this is Miles, I'm on the board. I have a question, when there's a moment for it.
Just a minute. We're going to figure out how many days we have first, Miles.
They can also agree to. They can agree.
Yeah. All right, so 100 days of when?
So from December 7th, 19th.
Okay, so, February 19th, January 19th is 30, February 19th is 60, March 19th is 90. We should be okay.
Yeah. I don't think I can see the ending, like, is this the letter or is this a pre-standing thing? Does that need to, do we need to address that with respect to that? She's really focusing on that.
I'll mention that to you.
Just to let you know, we're supposed to act within a certain number of days from the filing of something, and we want to set a calendar date to make sure we're not violating them.
And it looks like that that drop-dead date would be sometime around March 17th, March 19th. If we have our meeting, which we're.
February 20th.
February 20th, we should be okay. And I guess my question, is that acceptable to, does that seem like a reasonable date for, for the Adlers? Does that work for you?
I, yeah, I think.
I'm being out of country myself, but I can be, I can be here.
Wow. Well, we'd like to have you here, here. I mean, I'm not.
My job unfortunately precludes.
Well, I understand that.
Right.
We want you to keep your job, Dave. What about the following week?
I'll make whatever you want, the 20th, I'll make, I'll make it work.
27th would be too.
We have, we do have a hearing on the 27th. Do we want to have a doubleheader?
I don't think we want a doubleheader.
I'll be here.
Okay, well, Dave, if there's an issue, well, we want to resolve that because we have a lot of bodies here.
I understand that. I'll make it work.
All right, so I think what we'll do, Miles, you had a comment before we suspend?
Yes, just a question I would have for the current owners of the property. Is the connection to the gas line still in place, or has that truly been cut off? I, I think that was mentioned, but I didn't understand the status of that.
No, it is not connected. Depends which connection you're talking about.
The connection, the connection from the buried storage tanks to the gas line, to the natural gas line.
That does not exist. The facility, they still take off the Kinder Morgan line, of course.
Can Miles hear?
Yes, I can hear. Yes, I can hear. But that, that answer wasn't really clear, that who, who can still take off the Kinder Morgan line? I didn't understand that part.
Berkshire Gas takes just regular natural gas off the Kinder Morgan line and closing the system underground. That's the part of the facility that Berkshire Gas still uses.
Okay, and that was, okay, that, that's good to know because that sounds like that was part of the original licensed operate, right?
Mm-hmm. That, that operation has existed since before zoning, I'm sure.
Okay. All right, thank you.
For what it's worth, the 20th, I will be away, I could maybe more often. The 27th would be better, I don't know if that was.
Well, we have a hearing on the 27th, and we're not real keen on doing two firsts, especially given this kind of a circumstance.
I got it. I will probably zoom in.
Okay, well, yeah, if you could zoom in, hopefully that would, that would be helpful. And if there's anybody that, from Berkshire Gas, that might be able to shed some light on that, that would be helpful as well. Okay. Yes, sir?
Does the town have counsel, Mark Spreck from the Alhillo Road? Does the town have counsel that's researching this? Because the Adlers are paying for an attorney. And, you know, we've obviously, without pointing fingers, we've got a lot that's been going on, and I think some of the licenses have been a slide. So what's the town's approach here in terms of how they're going to?
The town's approach is very simple. I'm a lawyer, she's a lawyer, but we're not the town's lawyer. What we do in this situation is we seek guidance, legal guidance from Town Council. So what will happen here is, if we get any information from Attorney Ariente or Attorney Martin, that would be something that would be sent to the Town Council, and he would give, give us some guidance with respect to some of the issues raised.
Is that zone currently a, is it zone for a depot right now?
Well, the issue here is you have, this was permitted in 19, based on the 1967 zoning laws. And I have not looked to see what our present zoning laws say, but I think Attorney Ariente represented that under our existing zoning laws, that probably would not be here, would be permitted use.
So currently, under our current zoning laws, a depot could not run out of?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll see anyone who is interested in coming on February 20th.
20th.
Thank you all for your time and your attention. Appreciate your, your efforts. Thanks.
Thank you very much.